Hey Hector.
Hello, Mayor Garby.
Hi, Councilor Prestizo, Member Prestizo.
Hello, how are you?
Good, really good. After that great weekend of fun.
Yeah, that was pretty fun. I stopped by for a little while, but I got a COVID booster on Friday and so Saturday I had flu-like symptoms. I was just all achy and didn't feel very good.
Sorry to hear that, that's awful, but I'm glad you got the, is that booster number four, is that what you got?
Yeah, it's the bivariate one, I figured, I've come this far, what the heck?
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna do the same thing. Hi, Tessa. Oh, she's coming, she's loading on her audio. Hi, Member Greider. All right, is the gang all here? Perry Miller, I know Byers is gonna be absent, so we're just waiting on Clark, have we heard from Clark? Jason Clark's not feeling well.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so another absence. So it looks like we have everybody that's gonna be here tonight and that looks like a horn to me, so let's just go ahead and get going. I will call the Torah regular meeting of October 4th, 2022 to order please at 6:00 PM, roll call please.
Board Member Penemirov.
Here.
Board Member Greider.
Here.
Board Member Prestizo.
Here.
Board Member Byers is absent. Board Member Perry Miller.
Here.
Vice Chair Clark is absent and Chair Ayers Flood.
Here.
Madam Chair, you're mayor. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you Hector. The next item on the agenda is speakers heard on non-agenda items, Hector, do you have any speaker request forms tonight?
Madam Chair, as of 5 o'clock this afternoon, there were no speaker requests form submitted for the Torah meeting.
Thank you, I'll look to the audience to see if there's anybody that wants to speak on non-agenda item. Anybody, just raise your hand. All right. Seeing none. The next item on the agenda is the financial packet for July and August of 2022, Steph.
Yes, so this is just part of your consent calendar, the regular financial packet that you will be receiving every month. Tessa is here to also help any questions you might have about the reports.
Anybody? Uh, Member Penemirov.
Thanks, it took me forever to find my hand, I'm just gonna do this. Yeah, so as far as we're just acknowledging the financial reports in the consent calendar, calendar? Yeah, cuz it seems to me there was a decision that we postponed about that's coming up later in the agenda.
So the decision that was postponed was around adoption of financial management policies. The consent calendar that you'd be approving tonight, as Member Penemirov said, would just be acknowledging that you have received the financial packets.
Do you need a motion for that, or you just need consent, don't you, for acknowledgement?
Correct.
What was that?
Just consent.
Yep. All right, so has everybody had a chance to review the financial packet? So does anybody object to acknowledging the financial packet? Without any objection, we have consent. The next item on the agenda is, thank you again, Tessa, I love the format, so much nicer both for Torah and the city, it's the running total and balance is just such a great tool.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is items from Executive Director 4.1 Resolution 22-06, adopting internal financial controls and procedures and rescinding Resolution 15-13, staff report.
Yeah, thank you Chair. So this is the proposed updated internal financial controls and procedures, this was presented to you all last month and the board decided to take the time to review it further. I am more than happy to go through the draft again, just to highlight the main areas, but I do wanna call attention to releasing a film point within this policy. You know, and that being whether the Executive Director position is filled by a city staff member, like it currently is, or an individual firm external to the city, the City of Talent would provide financial services. And the reason for this is this cuz we have the staffing to allow for adhering to financial management policies of dual signatures, etc. And then the other major condition is that the policy would be reviewed whenever the City of Talent updated their financial management policies, since this policy is based on the City of Talent's policies or every two years, whichever occurs sooner, just as really good housekeeping and to keep it fresh in everyone's minds.
Great. Any questions or comments for staff? Yep, I just wanna add that I really appreciate the synchronicity, even if we even if the agency were to have a different Executive Director, which has happened off and on over the years. I think it's just greater efficiency having the larger team within the city handle all of the administrative more, in particular, the financial management pieces, so I think get a much more powerful administrative machine this way and much more efficient, so thank you for that, any other comments or questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, I think we might have lost the chair.
Member Perry Miller.
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution 22-06, adopting internal financial controls and procedures and rescinding Resolution 15-13.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 22-06, adopting internal financial controls and procedures and rescinding Resolution 15-13. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councilor, Board Member Penemirov.
Yes.
Board Member Greider.
Yes.
Board Member Prestizo.
Yes.
Board Member Perry Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries, Chair Ayers Flood.
Thank you Hector. And thank you Steph. The next item on the agenda is Resolution 22-07, authorizing bank depositories and signatures and rescinding Resolution 22-02, staff report.
Yeah, so this resolution really just adds Tessa as Finance Director as one of the signers of Torah's checks and access to our bank accounts. This brings us in line with our financial management policies that we just adopted, which names a Finance Director as one of the checkpoints within our financial management policies.
Any questions or comments for staff? Seeing none. I'll entertain a motion. Member Prestizo.
I move to adopt Resolution 22-07, authorizing bank depositories and signatories and rescinding Resolution 22-02.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 22-07, authorizing bank depositories and signatories and rescinding Resolution 22-02. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Board Member Penemirov.
Yes.
Board Member Greider.
Yeah.
Board Member Prestizo.
Yes.
And Board Member Perry Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you Hector, I have a quick question before I move on to the next item. Jordan, you mentioned that the financial review process is on a calendar, how frequent is that?
Financial review process, can you clarify what you mean by the financial review process?
Well, you, so I'm sorry, financial review, the review of the procedures and policies, you suggested that they would be reviewed in synchronicity with the cities, and how often does that happen? I didn't catch that.
Yeah, so City of Talent, typically we tend to change and amend our financial policies when state regulation changes. So when something changes at the state level, that would trigger us to need to follow new policies. And historically, it's also been reviewed every time that a new Finance Director or a new City Manager has stepped into the role. Tessa and I, I will say with my city hat on, are working on some financial management policy updates that we would like to propose to the City Council. And we would like to incorporate something similar to that review process of occurring every two years with the city policy as well.
Yeah, I thought you had mentioned at one point in time you were gonna put it on a regular schedule. Sort of superseding or being more frequent than even like historical or cuz I know that we haven't always reviewed it as the as the financial rules have changed over the years, and so I think putting it on our two-year rotation will just make sure we don't miss a single thing. I think that's great, and I wanted to make sure the rest of the board heard that. Okay, great. So the next item on the agenda is Resolution 22-08, authorizing the Executive Director to sign a contract with Elaine Howard Consulting LLC for Urban Renewal Plan Development. Steph?
Yes, so you all as a board are familiar with Elaine Howard, we have been working with her for the past year on the development of an urban renewal plan proposal. That contract has met its not-to-exceed amount, and so I did go out for a new procurement process where I invited three, you know, Oregon-based urban renewal companies to place a bid on doing a scope of work to refine our urban renewal plan, redraft documents, re-go through the public review period, and then consideration by council and forwarding it on to the ballot. We only received two bids back, one from Elaine Howard Consulting, the other from Johnson Economics. I am making the recommendation that the agency goes with Elaine Howard Consulting, cuz she did provide much deeper knowledge of what's going on in the ground of talent because of her work here, and overall, her price is cheaper when you factor out the contingency that she has built in.
Any questions or comments?
I would also love to make the quick comment that I really enjoyed working with Elaine, since my tenure as Executive Director of Town Urban Renewal, and I would love the chance to continue working with her.
Great. I just have one comment in the reported, you know, something was brought to my attention earlier and in a closer review, I think it's a I think it is a little bit of a kind of a misstatement and it's under the report on page, and it's not a critical thing, but I think adding more context might be helpful for the record, I'd like to see a little more context for the record. And specifically the point that the city's original proposal for an urban renewal plan received a significant amount of pushback from the impacted taxing jurisdictions. And as such, the Urban Renewal Agency is taking time to refine the plan. I don't disagree that the pushback came from the impacted districts, but I don't think that's the reason why we asked to refine the plan, I think, you know, I think it happened, but I don't think it was the as such. I think the record, and any member can correct me if I'm wrong, the record really shows clearly that we were responding to feedback from our community about how they wanted to see us proceed, and and so I just, if it looks more like a shortcut to me, although I don't think that's all the staff's intention, but I would like to see a little more context there, cuz I think in these, in these times, kind of accuracy and context is gonna matter, so especially with this particular with this particular item, so it, does anybody object to adding a little more context? Or asking, Jordan, I would totally trust you to do that, Jordan, cuz I know that if you couldn't get it by memory, which I suspect you could, you would be able to review the record and just add a little more context.
I will, first off, Chair, I apologize for it, that I was the one that drafted this RFP, so any inaccuracies are on me, so my apologies for for that misidentification. I will say that this was an invitation to bid that has already gone out. So we can absolutely, you know, make sure that future communications around this topic emphasize that fact. Changing at this point, you know, I will not require us to go back out to invitation for bid again.
That makes sense, and so with that, I'm sure that you'll find a way to correct, to correct the record, and I'm satisfied with that, and and please know that I don't even think an apology is necessary, I don't think, I don't think it, I don't think, I think it was just not even less than an oversight, but but I would, you know, I would want the record to reflect that this board was very responsive to the feedback from the talent residents, and and I think our decision reflects that, certainly our deliberation reflects that, and I'd like to have that show as part of the record.
Great, I will incorporate that language into the recitals for the contract that we form with the consultant that we go with.
Yeah, it also lends it lends, it lends the credibility to the 45-day process that we went through, you know, I mean, it was hard to get through that whole process and be patient while we, while we took all the feedback, and I think on some level, how the process concluded in accordance with the rules was honorable, and I'd like this board to I'd like the record to reflect that. So I thank you so much for taking those comments, are there any other comments on this item?
I do have one more comment, if you don't mind, Chair.
Before we move on, really quickly, I'm so sorry, I just wanna close this matter, cuz I should have asked, does any of the board disagree with anything that I said about my comments? Okay, I'm sorry, Jordan, please go on.
No problem, just a reminder to the board and the folks in the audience tonight, you know, this is the last major part that the Torah board will play in terms of the urban renewal plan development. You know, my focus is going to be having conversations about changes to the urban renewal plan, including Elaine's work will be at the City Council meetings, just to help make it easier for our community to track what's going on and provide feedback in that setting.
Member Prestizo.
Yeah, I brought up at the last Torah meeting, and I'm hoping that we're getting traction on it, is to do a real sort of side-by-side comparison between the various grants that are available that could help us with recovery and what we're hoping to do with the Torah money, since that was, there's a lot of concern about that from the community and the other taxing districts. It seems like it would be our due diligence, just to look at those things side by side and come up with concrete, you know, where we are.
Absolutely, thank you, Member Prestizo, I am working on that, so I do look forward to bringing that to City Council. I actually just had a meeting with the state last week regarding the HUD funding that's coming down the pipeline and how it can or cannot be used to help with some of the goals that were in that originally proposed urban renewal plan. So I do look forward to bringing that comparison list to you all, so we can clearly understand, you know, how urban renewal can really make the biggest impact.
Thanks.
Member Greider.
Thank you, Jordan, could you give just a little more detail? Don't wanna get too far into it, but about what will be moved over to City Council meetings versus these meetings in the future?
Yeah, absolutely. So during our study sessions at City Council, starting October 19th, and I will probably add one or two meetings as well between October, November, is where we'll be really sharing with you some of the more specific projects that have come up as ideas for the urban renewal plan, I have been working with different community groups to help name specific projects. Our new financial analysis, we do expect the tax rule to be certified by this Friday. And so that means whatever consultant we work with can work on that financial analysis, that will be brought forward in a study session or in a City Council meeting. And really, the reason for doing that is we just have higher attendance at City Council meetings, and they're more regularly occurring, and so it'll just be easier for our community to track what's going on at the same time that you all as City Council are deliberating and taking feedback.
Any other comments or questions? Member Penemirov.
Thanks, I just wanted to echo some of what Jordan said about, about working with Elaine, I've just been so impressed with her depth of knowledge and her understanding, and I think that, that it's really important, especially when when there is a kind of, there can be a lack of understanding among you know, other, other folks in government and other jurisdictions, and sometimes there's misinformation as a result, so yeah, I've really enjoyed working with Elaine, so I'm glad, I'd be glad to see her back on board.
One concern I had about the proposal, Jordan, was, thank you, Eleanor, I think you froze it. Oh yeah, I think you froze up. Did ever, was it just my screen that froze, or was everybody's screen frozen?
Mayor, I think just yours.
Hello?
Chair, can you hear us?
Was it my screen that froze?
It was.
Or did everybody freeze?
It was your screen.
Sorry, everybody, I think I have a bad signal. Can am I good now? All right, sorry about that. The only question I have about the proposal is that there's a $5,000 contingency in case there's additional work needed. I would imagine, cuz that seemed a little low to me, but I would imagine that we can revisit that if we needed to, right?
So we will be able to increase any contract we make by an additional 25% just through a contract amendment.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions or comments? That's been my experience, I just wanted to clarify it. If there's no other comments, I will entertain a motion. Member Perry Miller.
I move to adopt Resolution 22-08, authorizing the Executive Director to sign a contract with Elaine Howard Consulting LLC in an amount not to exceed $33,230 for urban renewal plan development.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 22-08, authorizing the Executive Director to sign a contract with Elaine Howard Consulting LLC in an amount not to exceed $33,230 for urban renewal plan development. Is there any further discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Board Member Penemirov.
Yes.
Board Member Greider.
Yes.
Board Member Prestizo.
Yes.
Board Member Perry Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you Hector. Item 4.4 on the agenda is Executive Director Report, staff.
Yeah, so I just wanna give you all a quick update on just ongoing projects. The purchase and sale agreement for Tax Lot 2200, we have entered escrow with, we have deposited the agency's earnest money, and we are waiting on the title report to be able to do our full due diligence. As a reminder, this is that piece of property downtown that we've referred to as the Lacy Property, where we hope to snag the space to build our Wagner Road extension down the line, which is a part of the long-term plan for infrastructure down there. And I'll pause between each one in case any folks have any questions. The other update is on our Gateway Transitional Housing site down at that Gateway project site. I did go ahead and meet with Gateway residents in September along with all of our other agency partners, and it was really great to meet folks face-to-face and hear directly, you know, what the biggest challenges are for folks who are living in Gateway. You know, the ongoing challenges for day-to-day life at the Gateway is just the maintenance on the trailers and making them fully livable for folks. And then laundry has been a big challenge of getting laundry done, and at a price point where folks can still continue to save money for down deposits on future apartments, etc. The other update for Gateway Transitional Housing site is that Rogue Retreat has asked to formally transition away from the site as they're going through their restructuring, you know, they're recognizing that they're trying to pull back into their core services as they figure things out. We're looking forward to doing a really warm handoff, they're active in helping us identify a future property manager for the role, and we're working with our partners as well to identify someone that can fill it. It's really great to see the level of support that's still occurring for this project throughout the valley. And also, along the same trend, we have recently been approached by some nonprofit housing developers who are interested in participating in an RFP, where the agency to go out for a permanent development RFP for that. where the agency to go out for a permanent development RFP for that Gateway site. This is great timing because Salazar Architect has just wrapped up this week their revisioning report, which I didn't have time to add to the agenda packet since I did get that final email today. But I will look forward to sharing that all with you at our next meeting, which is a good time to start thinking about that future development for the site. Update, our Oregon Main Street Alliance Grant, this is the 200,000 grant to help restore the Malgram Historical Garage with Bonnie Morgan and her team. Bonnie has submitted her final design plans for that project, so we've submitted them to the grant manager for approval. And then once that's approved, we can start expending those funds to help break ground of that property and rebuild Malgram Garage. So thank you so much to Bonnie and team for getting that design over to us. And then just to let everyone here on the board know, next month, we will be talking about the different beautification grant programs through Tura. The city will have a new staff member on board by then, Mike Oxendine. And in Mike's role, part of it will be to help apply these beautification grant programs, specifically a tree planting grant program and looking at revise, revitalizing a facade improvement grant program. Sorry, I'm right before getting cold, and so it's hard to say certain sounds. So next, next month, we look forward to giving you just a summary of what's been done to date, ways the staff might look to help refine those programs, and then how we'll go about implementing now that we're back into planting season. All right, I'm gonna give it a pause there, that was a lot of just talking at you. Any questions on these topics or other topics that are Tura-related? I will also say, really avoid getting whatever cold is going around. I do have about a third of my staff out right now. A fourth, third might have been saying too much.
So, I want to ask a clarifying question about the RFP process. So there have been some, there have been some organizations that are interested in us coming to RFP by the end of the year. Is that, do I have that right? That's what I thought, I understood.
Yeah, one organization that approached us would like it to be able to be completed by the end of the year or early in January. And that's primarily because there are grant funds that they would like to go after to help them build specific types of affordable housing. You know, the process for us to be able to go out for RFP, you know, would really be for Kristen Mays and I, Kristen, the Development Director that I would work with on this project, to look over the RFP that was prepared immediately before the fire and to make sure it aligns still with the same vision for that site. And then bring it before you all as a board to also make comments on and potentially refine. And with your blessing, you would go ahead and post the RFP, and then there is then a procurement process that we follow to be able to collect bids, select bids in a very fair manner, and then bring the choice back to you as a board if there's a specific bid to select.
So, and I think it's, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it may not be able to be done by the end of the year, but it's definitely has gotten our juices now looking at it at a faster timeline than we would have otherwise, I think at this point.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting to have them come to us and, and look to kind of reignite the RFP process that we were literally in on the day of the fire. I think we were gonna, if I remember correctly, we were gonna like submit it on the day of the fire or something like that.
I think September 10th was the date for submission, and it was September 8th that the fire hit.
Yeah, and, and I think because we have, we have different levels of understanding about that, I think it might be a good idea to touch a little bit on, you know, the, the, the vision for that property was a community-led vision, and it include, included a commercial piece. And I don't want to leave that out of the discussion so that it go, that it potentially could be misunderstood. So could you talk a little bit about the thought process around that as well?
Yeah, so Kristen and I right now are brainstorming several options. So just, I don't have the slides available on my computer to remind you all, but on the site itself, the idea was really to do commercial along the main commercial corridors, which was West Valley View Road and Highway 99, with mixed use, so residential up top. Have kind of a core center area, kind of outdoor space in the middle, and then to have housing around and in the middle section of the piece. So we could approach it in multiple ways. You know, we could go out for an RFP where we're asking a developer to develop the entire property, so both the commercial and the multifamily apartments. Or what we could do is we could split the lot up into different segments and go out for separate RFPs for the different segments. So for example, if we had, you know, if we wanted to move forward with that multifamily housing, we could segment off that specific portion of the property and then go out for a separate RFP that's more geared towards commercial developers. The advantage in looking at it separately is that most folks either specialize in commercial development or in housing development, and so it can make it more easy to access it. But it's also more cohesive sometimes to be able to develop the whole piece of property rather than the one. So that'll be a conversation that we have with you as a board to really decide which is the best direction to go for that piece of property.
Great. Any other questions or comments on the Executive Director's report? Any, okay, so we'll move on to item, thank you, Jordan, for the great report.
And. We have one piece of information that I forgot to add, I think is a good celebration point. I believe that we now have eight families that were at the Gateway Transitional Housing site that have found their permanent homes. So there are lots of success stories happening, and more affordable housings in the pipeline. So.
Awesome.
Yeah, looking forward to what this next year brings.
Yep, I just, on that more affordable housing and pipeline bit, I did speak with Jason Elsie from Housing Authority of Jackson County yesterday, and they are literally in the middle of the, you know, they got past the, the big, the big stall with the feds, the federal agency that they were partnered with on that project. And now they're able to just move forward with straight-up affordable housing without the federal agency strings attached to it, which is really great news. It sure took a while to get through that. And they now are in engineering, and from what I understand, will be going to RFP in just a couple of months as well. So that is, that's a really, really great, hopeful project for our community and for that long-term vision. Council, or member Penamra, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I didn't hear you say, I think you're talking about Anderson Vista.
Yeah, Anderson Vista.
I just didn't hear it, you mentioned it.
Yeah.
So if people aren't aware, you know, what was going on with that?
Yeah. And so just to let folks know, because I know this is a topic of great importance to the board. So along with Anderson Vista, which is roughly about 30 units, Commonwealth, also known as Renaissance Flat, has broken ground, and they expect to have 72 units of affordable multifamily housing. And then last week at Planning Commission, they approved plans for a 22-unit senior affordable living. That one has not gone to the building permit stage yet or has Anderson Vista, but those are both pipeline items that we're looking forward to digging dirt and building buildings.
All, all really contributing to, you know, our, our ability to move with, move further on the gateway eventually. So that's, to get back to our original intention there, which, as I said earlier, is the community-led vision. So that's great. All right, so thanks again. I really appreciate the, the opportunity to ask a few questions and talk a little bit more about it. Item number five on the agenda is items from the chair of the agency members. Anything coming up for anybody for future agenda or discussion points tonight? Outside what we've already talked about? Member Penamra.
Thanks, I'll just mention that I attended the regular monthly county fire recovery meeting. And, you know, there's some, there's some good news out of there about, you know, the long-term recovery group and the work that they're doing. I understand that Royal Oaks, which is, I think, in county, also another Jason Elsie Housing Authority of Jackson County project is moving ahead with, and those are the ones that are going to be placing the modular homes. And I think the approximate move in, the best guess is like fall of next year. And then there was a little bit, there was a little bit of discussion around something that doesn't affect very many people, but it was kind of not, not great news. But there was a FEMA was trying, giving the opportunity for folks who were living in FEMA trailers to buy them and to stay there. You know, what, what happened is, is it was, it became understood later that the FEMA trailers do not meet code in terms of permanent housing, neither federal HUD code nor State of Oregon code. The county was on the meeting, and they basically said, well, you know, if people don't move their trailers and just stay in place, we're not going to go after them. You know, we're not going to enforce anything. But if they were going to try to move the FEMA trailer to another location, that would be a problem. So anyway, it was kind of, everybody's remarking that it was kind of odd that FEMA didn't know this, other people didn't know this until then, but it doesn't really affect that many people. I think there've only been 18 purchases of FEMA trailers. So anyway, I think the long-term recovery group and the other folks are really doing a great job in terms of trying to collaborate and solve problems. But anyway, that was the only points of interest from that meeting today.
Any, any other items from agency members? All right, so item number six is written, communications, there are none. Item number seven is adjournment. So I will adjourn this meeting at 6:39. Good night, everybody, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.